All right, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting. We don't have to do the pledge allegiance because we already did. All involved, same. Myself, Amy Freak, Kim Burkheimer, Ed Spiker, and Melissa, our assistant Melissa Premier. Melissa, do we have the correspondence? I don't know if he, the, the notes from Paul, I don't know if he got that. Okay. So he has, I think he has them. Unless they're in. All right, so there's one of them. Yeah, that was it.
Uh, that goes back here.
Is there anything in here for that? No. Or is that just something?
But he's, yeah, I don't see anything.
I just. Okay, just explains. All right, um, so I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November four, two thousand point three meeting.
A second motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The correspondence, we have, um, a number of campers, renters, reached out to the town regarding the new construction at Loon Lake. The clerk has reached out to the owner and spoke to Brian Lund, owner of the deck. It includes additions to the existing septic system and new lots. Campers have shared their displeasure and concern for the proximity to the shoreline. Town has no standing to request permit for moving decks. If the project, and if the project with the septic stays within the bounds of the existing plan, Hampshire D E S is satisfied. If residents or campers, renters have any issue with the changes at the park, please contact Hampshire D E S directly.
I have a question on this.
Okay.
Do we have a plan of the existing site itself in Loon Lake? Of what it's supposed to be, the build out that it is now?
I believe so. Okay, yeah. Coming up, there we go.
Hi, so, um, when people started reaching out to the town offices regarding that, I was able to utilize the Laredo system to look up a number of, uh, plans and plots where over the years they had kind of outlined where they were going to put those spots. Um, I don't know. The town, the departments of the town as it relates to them adding new ones, do they need to have another law plan adjustment? Do they need to submit? I assume that they would need to update those plans so that if someone says, oh, you know, that we're having, we have an emergency here at this site, that the maps that we have in town are current with the ones that are, it was actually out there. Outside of that, I would imagine, but they are, um, on file with the Missouri appeals.
Thank you, Paul.
We have a letter from Joe Marco. Uh, Joe Marco was requesting that the board, um, elevate the second position of the transfer station to reflect the facility manager title as required by Hampshire D E S. Joe's letter outlines his intention to serve as that individual at a rate of twenty dollars per hour, not exceeding fifty hours per calendar year. Um, I don't, does, does anyone know that the dump is closed Wednesday?
I heard about. I heard that it was closed on Wednesday. But I hadn't heard any reason why, or anything else. I saw that it was being plowed out that morning. So.
I honestly think that it's a really good idea so that we have backup. And he's experienced, and he's got all of the certification and everything that he needs.
His certifications are current?
Yes, yes, they are. Yeah.
Had to look, need to come up to the microphone. That's okay, though. This time. Okay, so.
Do you want to make?
Do we, do we have a job description of what he would be doing besides what's outlined there?
Yeah.
As long as we have that in, in writing, I'm very comfortable with it. He knows the transfer station.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have no issue with that.
Yeah, all right, I'll talk to him this weekend.
Can I ask a quick question? Is that just for when Carl is sick, or is he gonna hang out fifty hours a year to get his fifty hours?
We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that it's all outlined. I certainly want, I don't know if there's any, it doesn't matter.
There's no matter, ma'am. No, I was actually gonna say fifty hours in a year is negligible, whether he wants to go down there and work it or not, in my opinion. I'm not saying negligible, I'm saying if he wants to go down and earn that time, that's fine by me, whether it's duty required that day or not. But please be aware that when it's, uh, when it's time to be emergency called, that that's your main time, I guess is what it is.
I think maybe certifications require a certain amount of hours.
Yeah, I was gonna say that, yeah.
I don't, I don't think.
You know the rules, Brenda.
Yep.
I, first of all, I don't think Joe should get paid more than Carl.
Who are you?
Thank you.
Who are you?
Thank you.
The mayor of Freud.
Just figured I asked, ma'am.
So Carl wasn't in the pay range of seventeen something, I forget. And if Joe wants twenty, Carl's in there for what, eight, nine years or something? So I think twenty is excessive for Joe.
I think he's offering to do this because he's gonna be doing all of the all the certification stuff that Carl doesn't wanna do. Like, I mean, the reporting and stuff like paperwork.
I don't know what recording Carl is supposed to be doing, because.
I hate to say it, but I don't necessarily see the need for a second position to do that kind of recording. And I'll say that on the record. If that's your job and you need to be recording this, that, and the other, that's what it is, and I'm sorry.
So I, I, I don't mean to interrupt, but I think Mr. Marco, on his time on the select board, took care of all of the reporting functions of the transfer station. I think that he also spent a lot of time researching where the, the recyclables went. Isn't that correct, Brenda? Didn't he look and see where the recyclables went to get the most money for the glass? The, where the roll-off trailers went to? So I, I know that he spent time researching where the roll-off trailers came from, where the tip-off trailers went to, how he could combine the different metals, or the, the different, um, refrigerators, anything that had some of the things that couldn't be recycled so that if not make money, at least not pay as excessive rates on.
Well, right now, they're paying sixty-eight thousand dollars a year to offer that dump.
I know. That's, it's a a big tax burden for the town.
As far as the hourly rate.
I, I was working on a couple of things to try to rectify that, but I, I'm not getting very far with it, so, right now, anyway. I'd rather turn some of that into making money, like with the tires, the refrigeration, those two things especially.
If we keep the glass out of the general garbage, we'd save too, because it's glass free.
Right.
I'm more than happy to have Joe on, for his knowledge and everything he would know. I don't necessarily know if it's worth having an extra person on, just because somebody else doesn't know the parameters of their job.
No, no, that's not what he meant. I just meant, because he's on the select board, he needs to do the annual reporting stuff, and, you know? And I don't mean that he's there to be a boss, he's just there, if Carl isn't there, he's there. That's what I meant. Um, but yeah, I will talk to him this week to do, to go over a job description. Uh, the budget advisory committee update, uh, we had a meeting last week. Two weeks ago.
Last week.
Last week.
Thursday. Oh, sorry, Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Wednesday. Day before Thanksgiving.
Yep. It's okay. We have another one this Thursday, making good progress with that. Um, we still don't have our finalized rate for the twenty twenty-three tax bill from D R A. We have our documents submitted since the fourteenth, um, and the website will be updated with the tax bill date on the front page when it happens. Pinnacle Road Class Six. I know Mr. Physics here, and.
Really here?
What?
He's been here.
So we are still looking back at these kind of things. But trying to find own, proper ownership of the roads, correct? And now we have, um, that cemetery that needs some maintenance, um, that's gonna require access and the road to be in decent shape. So I guess really my answer is, and I know you want an answer, but we don't have one yet.
And may I ask one, just thinking about any of these, what's here? With all due respect, uh, can we not address the issue that's, that I'll propose as an interim staff, and then you deal with whatever other issues you have to do?
So just the daylight hours?
The daylight hours, and I would also ask you to take a look at the, uh, propensity vehicle option under two, because of Mr. Vermaiko. Understanding that any maintenance vehicles will definitely be optioned in. I have no qualms with that gentleman, Dave, now that I think I've been, uh, taking over the cemetery maintenance. By all means, he's gotta have the equipment to go up there and take care of the cemetery. Uh, but as far as recreational purposes, if somebody wanted to see the cemetery.
Dave? Who's Dave?
Uh, I think Steve was up there with a gentleman that we're looking at, and putting in a bid to take care of cemeteries. I just saw him today. Yeah, I think he was a road agent. So anyways, I talked to these gentlemen, uh, the other day, and they replied, and, uh, there was some conversation about potentially doing some work up there. But anyways, going back to my issue, I, I would strongly urge you to support daylight hours only, because Mr. Vermaiko is still in a pen and hold situation, so the next meeting, procedural meeting in court, is December, uh, twelfth, tenth, rather, tenth or twelfth, I forget right now. At that point, we're gonna find out when he pleads out guilty to vandalism, uh, criminal mischief and harassment. But speaking with the trooper, the trooper Howell, state trooper, he said eventually he might be allowed to go back up there. So my whole point is, he can go up there if he wants to walk up there, if he wants to go up on his, uh, side by side, I'm fine with that. But this gentleman has held that, uh, created damage with his vehicle. And if it's not him, somebody else can do the same thing. So in the nine years that we've been there, nobody goes up there on the vehicle. And nobody goes up there with the exception of this gentleman at night. So in my correspondence to the board, my whole issue is you're not gonna be inconveniencing the town people or anybody else who has an interest going to that cemetery. It's these people that are dumbheads, that are just trying to obstruct it and give what I like, and I, our time, because we live like seventy-five feet from that road. That's, that's not my statement. But I think the board, you know, they ask you to give us disability to curtail that traffic, and then you can deal with the other issues before then, in any which way you know. So that would be my desire.
So my concern is setting a precedent too. So I'm comfortable with having a temporary daylight-only limitation on this trail until we have all of our ducks in a row and can finalize it. But I don't wanna, I don't wanna do a permanent something and then set a precedent where other people are gonna ask for certain sections to be.
Then we're still gonna restrict from three-one to six-one. Correct. March to June.
That's a wait limit, though, right? That's not anything, it's just a wait limit. Right, right. So, so, John, this, the sign on the road, the sign on the road limits, I had some questions from, it said that the town of Freud closes pinnacle roads to all vehicles from March first to June first, except the landowners. Is it, the road is closed completely, or is it a wait limit?
It's closed completely, and I think that same signage is on all class six roads in Freud. So it's not only on the.
So that all class six roads, all of them, are closed from, from March until June? Okay. Yeah, you can walk on them, that's fine. So, so my, my, my concern is that we treat all of the people, all of the public, all of the roads, the same across the board. So if all roads are closed from March to June, class six, then all roads are closed, March to June, class six. And we know, because Brenda and Paul provided news with the O H R V, that you can only use O H R Vs
From May to August.
May twenty-third until November.
On the town road.
On the town roads, and pinnacle, pinnacle road is right here, pinnacle road is on here. Yes, it does. It's a town road.
But there's also a, a time limit. You have to be off of that by ten-thirty.
Ten o'clock, ten o'clock.
Ten o'clock.
It doesn't, it doesn't differentiate between class six, class five, class four. It says pinnacle road. It doesn't say pinnacle road, non-class six. It just.
It's the whole road.
And it says you can't use it after ten o'clock at night.
Correct.
So.
But it doesn't say anything about vehicles.
It's just O H R Vs.
Correct. So I'm trying to be a little bit more restrictive, uh, curating even that action, maybe today. But I think we saw, we both saw, because you came up with the, with the property, this gentleman has no respect for mud season, given the rain that we've had. This guy, if he cares about mud, snow, rain, steals anything, he's gonna go up there and just create havoc. Unfortunately, there's no liability back to the town. There's no money in the coffers to fix anything, which, which is by design. So ultimately, you know, it's myself and Lynn and Todd, the state police, trying to keep this guy at bay. So I think having these two issues, uh, put at the forefront, we, we could end it without a sign. I think it'd make life a lot easier for us.
So if he doesn't obey the signage that's there now, what's going to stop him from obeying, what is gonna make him obey signage, more signage?
Well, if you think about it, uh, he didn't obey the signs now, but technically there were no signs because he had free range during the time that he did this damage. So if we had a sign, then I could work with the state police saying this gentleman is a violation. So there was some conversation of, I was sending this guy letters, which I'm sure probably never happened because you guys were busy with everything else, right?
No, we did send him a letter. We did, you sent him a letter.
You did send him a letter? So I don't know what ever happened with it. But the good news is, is, uh, bail. Now, he can't come up. And it's been wonderful. It was coming down. Better. But I think that'll change in the future. I think with your help, we can definitely manage it a lot better. And then we'll end up working with the state police like we did. And if it's harassment, then we'll bring suit instead of the state, because the state actually is suing this guy.
Um, what is, what are the snow, they're closed again and then open for snowmobiling? Is that?
It's.
We only have O H R Vs. We don't have anything about snowmobiles.
It's open for snowmobile season, but the only time it's closed is March to June.
March to June.
I mean, that's really the only time we have.
So my concern is if you're going to limit daylight hours, pedestrian only, then you have to do it on all classics roads, treat them all the same. Or you, you, you can't just pick and choose, that's like spot zoning. You gotta do it all the way. And I've had the same problems with that gentleman as you've had, so I know that.
But I hear you, and I'm all about uniformity and all that, but I think in the, uh, the letter, you see it from Yertan, when she talked about, you know, you were in term, right?
You see that?
There we are.
I had it.
The ability to also isolate that regulation to a specific road, if you have extenuating circumstances that warrant that. So all eggs aren't created equal, so to speak, though. You can't dismiss the fact that it was happening out there. And like I wrote to Amy here, I said, my, it was out of sight, out of mind, and we all go back, it happens again, and we've gone over there. Because there were no restrictions put in place to circumvent that. But I, I would again, just say, in closing, uh, you don't have to treat them closed essentially, because you have different circumstances that warrant different actions.
We, we have a landowner. We limit that road, won't have access to their road. And the cemetery, it would limit only walking to the cemetery. Oh, I had it.
Can I just wait? I'm sorry, can I just wait?
Go, we'll go right ahead.
In the nine years that we've been there, traffic is at a minimal to begin with. Uh, it's not a destination, it's a dead end. You're gonna go up to the cemetery and take a walk around. People come up, it's great, we engage with them, but it's not like you're gonna come back five, ten times a year to visit that place. It's just not that kind of environment. So, again, the traffic.
Yeah, I just, I, if I, if I owned this piece of land right here, I think I'd be kind of upset if my only way to get out there, even if I was using a a Jeep and whatever, was, was blocked off, only daylight hours, only pedestrian traffic.
And, so. He's, and he's the only one. He's, the other people are friends.
I mean, if you wanna call it what it is, the bad egg.
Yeah.
Proton apple, whatever you wanna call it. But not everybody's doing it. And I hate.
I hate it for you.
I, I.
He's awful. Sorry.
I don't even know the guy.
I haven't seen him.
I don't know the guy. Where do you live?
Where do I live?
Where do you live, Alma?
Oh, I, I think the guy should be restricted. I don't think, I, I know, but I don't think. Again, we set a precedent.
Can I just speak to that for a minute? When I had conversations with the state trooper about this gentleman, we talked about these orders, we talked about all kinds of other things. He says you cannot restrict this guy because it's a public road. You could restrict, I think the board, you can restrict how he accesses that. And that's all I ask. I ask you to say, again, if you wanna walk up, that's fine. You wanna take your ATV during these appropriate times, that's fine, but just keep your vehicle off of it because you're using it as a vehicle of destruction. So, thank you.
The other, do vehicles use the other classics roads, the, the one that goes way out?
Yep.
Like the end of.
Everything, all, everything. You run them all everywhere you want. I mean, if you got a Jeep that'll make it, you might as well take it. I hate to say it that way, but it's kind of the way it is.
All right, well, I, we can't, I, we can't sit here and think about it all night, so we need to table it until next meeting. Unless you wanna make some sort of decision.
I, I don't want to make a decision because my heart is with John, but my head is on the fact that whatever we do to unvote.
Yeah, same, same. So we, we, we need to work on more, because it's not going away. We're not gonna figure it out, we just need to make the right decision for the town as a whole. And this guy is going to court, and he's under the spotlight right now, and I haven't seen him around, so have you seen him?
He's there.
He's there.
He's there.
He's there. He's still there.
She's not going.
Hi, Hope Dana. Just wondering if we have a look at, are there R S As that address the issue of not classifying? Not him and all the roads in a class the same. Like, there are so many towns with classic roads, this can't be circumstance.
There's, there's cases that have been made in various towns. Some say one thing, some say the other. What it boils down to is the choice of the town, for the most part, and to set precedent in this town is dangerous, like. And then you instantly say that's how it goes.
That's each town's own decision.
To an extent, we're kind of at women's state for a bit of it. But it is up to us.
The, the town could, the town, a town meeting could vote to discontinue the road. The, it could become a class A trail. It, as a class A trail, then it would not be usable except by the, abutting. If, as a Class A trail, then it would not be usable except by the abutting landowners by anything according to a vehicle. The town could maintain an emergency lane out to the cemetery. There are many ways to maneuver around the whole obstacle, so to speak, in our road. But it just requires some work on some of these things. The land around the road, of course, is more valuable if it has road frontage. If you take the road frontage away from it, it becomes less valuable, and some people might want damages because now they don't have access to their property. So there's a lot of things to consider with.
And it is feasible to restrict access only to the landowners on particular roads?
We, we can't do that, but it's not up to the board. That's, it's a, it's a public road, anybody has the right to use it. It's town meeting, it would be a vote at town meeting to discontinue that road. But yeah, because of the town cemetery, because of the, because of the town cemetery, it's.
Just to follow up, if I may on that. We're not seeking to discontinue that vote, I think that doesn't make a lot of sense.
Thank you.
You know, the attorneys that I spoke with, they said because of that cemetery, you're gonna have a problem. But I did wanna point out, you know, we own like three quarters of the land around that road. And it's a dead end road, that road doesn't go anywhere. It's not like it's a classic road, you had access to trails, or you can hook up this road over here. These are extending circumstances, which I hope you'll recite. So it's not the same as a classic road. It's not like someone is gonna waste it there and continue on their path, they gotta come back around. There's no access out.
So it used to go out to Lovren way back when. And there actually used to be a portion of it that went out almost to four corners way back when. And I know that Mr. Spiker has made an application that was accepted for TCAP to work on roads and getting a whole road file so that we can look at our roads and connectivity here in town, which we are sadly lacking. But right now, right, it's a dead end road, but it doesn't mean that it always will be as.
It wasn't, it wasn't always.
Right now, yes, but if, if somebody decided that they were going to do some kind of a development, person on Lovren Hill, I don't know.
Yeah, but that person on Lovren Hill has probably a couple thousand feet of access to that property. They might come up Pinnacle Road, go up that classics road to access that property.
No, they would use Lovren Hill, then they might wanna come back down. It all depends, I'm just, that's a big future thing. But I'm just saying that at one point in time, way back when, Pinnacle did go out onto.
But people thought that road to Lovren was also a road, it was private property. It was never a road. People used it as a public road, and people accessed it, but it was never a public road.
It was, it was discontinued.
You're talking about the, the road off of Lovren?
Hyal and Call lived up there.
I believe that was dedicated.
It's a property that used to be Joshua Codman's farm, and it connected and got discontinued a long time ago. I can show you the map.
Okay.
Got it, right, Paul's office. But right now, you're right, it's a dead end road, but it leads out to the cemetery. And that cemetery is an old, old cemetery. So.
So we'll keep this on our burners?
Yes, we're gonna have to table.
Not today. Well, I suggested it, but that's, it has to, everybody has to agree.
Not everybody, two of you have to.
I'll make a motion to restrict access to Pinnacle Road Cemetery to daylight only hours until further notice.
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Nein.
Aye.
The other piece. As far as getting it settled completely? Oh, oh. He wants to restrict vehicle too.
No. I can drive on every other road, class six in this town. Daylight, sunup, sundown. I'm gonna give it a little bit of consideration time, as far as I'm concerned. This is just me, this is nobody else, till we figure out something else. Okay? Two weeks.
All right, so moving on. Highway Department, Joe Bolio Senior still doesn't have a gas card, what's happening? I thought I signed something. This is old. Joe Bolio's gas card.
So I talked with Angela. You don't see a whole lot of reimbursement charges for gas, ever. So we can certainly get him an Irving card or whatever, but there shouldn't be a rush on it because we don't see reimbursements for them.
I think because he doesn't give them to us.
Okay. So if you want to present that you need one, you should have some backup information that you need one. You know what I mean? You're saying you're spending all this money on gas. We don't have any.
Okay. I can text him.
And we don't need to know roughly how much is he spending.
New items, and this is just something that I noticed. We were going over the budget stuff. Yeah, and so we paid. There's no streetlights down by my house, and I know there was always one on Phillips's corner. There's still, there's still one up there, but it's not on.
Yeah.
So I want the streetlights back.
So we have three here, there's one on Route 10.
On Barton Road.
On Barton Road, that's all.
Both ends of Barton Road. And then, but there should be one at the end of Brighton Road.
All intersections, are you saying?
Well, this is when I was a kid. We have one at Brighton Road and at the corner of Turnpike. And actually, the Turnpike was lit, all of Brook Road was lit, lit to Brighton. And then there were at least three tied to church of that way.
Yeah, there aren't any on Turnpike.
I'm gonna go by the church often, I don't know if you know.
So what do the streetlights cost?
For the streetlights that we have, we pay about $130 a month.
And how many are there?
I don't know.
Nine.
I really wanna figure this out.
I'd take a guess and say nine.
I'd like to know, I'd like to know how many we have, and so what they're costing per month. And then we can figure out how much it would cost to add more. And, but I think having them on intersections would be a safety issue. And here comes our town clerk with the answer.
I can take it.
So there is, I think there is approximately 10, there's another one at Cat Street as well. The other issue is that there's two different types of lights. There's the yellow LED lights that everybody's gonna use too, but then there's the.
LED.
That are more expensive, so there is, I would reach out to the oil company to, to see what's available for us, because if they're like, oh, we're putting up these new ones, we may, you know, decide that, oh, maybe it needs to be a little bit more strategic with it. And I don't know if that, if say if it's $30 a month, and there's 10, so it's $13 a month for a hole, what would the overall budget look like, given those two different options for the prices? I don't know what the answer are, but I would think that if we guys make a decision, you guys, reach out to Mr. Jennings over at EverSource, he's our contact guy.
Yes, can I have his number?
Absolutely, I'll give you his code.
Oh, I know the rules, oh, I can do it.
I don't know these rules at all, but I do just wanna ask the board to investigate this, to also pay attention to whether there are certain lighting designs or kinds of bulbs that are better environmentally, because outdoor lighting actually has adverse environmental effects. Some respect for the safety benefits, but we should look at the whole picture and make a decision.
We don't want light pollution.
Do you remember where it belongs?
Did he leave? He went around.
He said he had enough of your crap. We're done here.
You mean, I mean, streetlights? All right, next, Innerware update. Can I read it?
Yes.
Paul is meeting with the onboarding specialist with Innerware, the company that will enable the use of credit cards tomorrow. Wowza. He will update the board at this meeting with a timeline for enabling credit cards at Town Hall. And you're.
Yeah, so I'm talking with her tomorrow. Talking with her tomorrow. The only cost that the town would need to do in order for us to be able to do that is obviously time. I want to be able to make sure that everything that we do reporting buys is not going to jam up our treasurer, our captain treasurer, with anything to do for their reporting. Like we did with your stuff, that was like before. And there's the cost of the actual meter itself. It's five bucks. And that's just, that's just what it is. But that's the only cost that the town would incur, and taxpayers would only incur costs if they decide to use their credit card. Someone says, you know what, I'm leaving credit cards, I don't like them, I don't, you know, I'm a cash only person. They're not paying, they're not putting bills together for you to be able to use the service. No, there's no monthly fee, it's if you use the service, you pay the good deed. It's either on websites, but you can see, you know what, no, this would happen. Or it's not based off of percentage of the total checkout part, it's by card. So if you put on a lot of things and your taxes and eventually you'll get there, your vehicle registration on there, it's charging you for that, that whole, that part, for that, that, that transaction. And if they, say, someone uses their card, we're not able to collect the response on those parts, it's not the town's responsibility, it's interparers, it's their responsibility to collect that, they give us the one card. So that's, you know, no impact to the taxpayer, no one has to chase anyone down for money if there's lack of payment. And it's used in over 120 something towns in the state of New Hampshire and Vermont as well. So.
I like it.
It's kind of, it's the 20th century more than 21st.
All right, quick notice that transfer, the 2024 transfer station renewals will be available starting December 1st at the town office, $1 for renewals. New hang tags are $2 each. You must have your license plate number of the vehicle that will be used.
They're gonna be in that color.
Yep.
Yes.
They're gonna be able to see them across the hall.
He said you're gonna see them, so I.
Do you wanna wait for him or let me open it up? No. I have to make a motion. Oh, yeah, I'm gonna wait, yeah.
Y'all heard it, y'all heard it.
I make a motion, we open public forum.
I just wanna make up one last thing for the new business. Town Hall streams will be installed within next week. So I'm off of that. Just so everybody knows. Yeah, whatever. I'll be here, bro. All right, nothing better than good.
I make, I make a motion, we open public forum.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You guys, you guys break the rules all the time.
Ain't nobody use.
You're supposed to wait till the end.
I have something. I have something for public forums.
My, my only question is with the snow that's probably gonna be happening in the next few months, is how should I take care of the steps? Is it my responsibility? Is it, I'm not here four days a week, is it?
The highway department's supposed to show them where to go.
Okay, all right, I'll just, I'll just, I'm sorry, I missed those steps and I was like. I was, I was like, oh, am I supposed to do this?
But do you have a bucket here with some soap?
I believe you do, yes. Yeah, we got there.
Okay.
Yeah, we got some stuff, so we'll do a little bit more into it. But the other day when it's not, I use my shoe.
No, so this came back to us, this was the one that we were concerned about protective radius, and we asked. And we were said, well, it hadn't gone to New Hampshire D E S yet. So it needs to go to New Hampshire D E S, but we're a town that approves first. We're a local town that approves first. We need to approve it, send it to D E S, so that they can look at it and see if they approve it. And then I guess it comes back to us, so that we can then see if zoning is going to, if we send it to zoning. I'm, I am not comfortable with this either.
So they need the variance, right?
Subject that goes out into the road here, and the protective well radius, which I brought, 75 feet.
The 75 feet goes into the road.
And. Yeah. So we either send it back to the designer and say, you know, your protective well radius is not 75 feet. Redraw.
One problem with that is he doesn't know the half of the road.
I don't wanna send. It seems to put in carpentry holes to me.
So we can send it back and tell him that he has to redraw the protective, redraw it. Redesign it to the specific well radius.
Yes, I love it, good.
I make a motion, we close public forum. A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Are we good?
I'm good.
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. So are we gonna get, we're gonna sign, made up for?
We need. Briefly. We need to, I think, briefly.
Shut the video up?
Yeah.